We're testing our live streaming, so your microphones are live all the time.
Oh, great.
And we're on the screen.
Is it right now?
So yeah, so this is our first test, so it'll be up there, you'll be able to review it. See if you've said anything stupid in the last thirty minutes.
More than usual. This could be a lot less.
I wish I'd known that before.
Yeah, we were recording over the line. It'll be available to you. So what'll happen is, if you go to our website, and either path will get you to the council page, whether it's Council Director or under Government Council, down the lower left-hand side is streaming, and you hit that, and it'll take you right to the YouTube page that'll have all of our meetings there, and people can look at it.
Great.
So...
Last week's meeting, huh?
No. No, something didn't work last week.
That's okay.
You hit the wrong button. So we really have a couple items on the agenda tonight, and the first is...
Oh, it's me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm Ben, do I have a good just go?
Go ahead.
Okay, cool. I don't know how things go with working session. So, I know we've met a few times, I have some really comments from Tobacco Free CFE and also Reality Check, uh, this is Dana Isabelle, she's Director for Tobacco Franklin, Tobacco Free Franklin and Essex. Um, we were asked to come in and talk about what's going on around New York State with, in regards to tobacco, and what other communities are doing to address tobacco and tobacco sales, and tobacco use in their community. I did go over the packet that I'm gonna be reading from, I usually don't do this, but there are a lot of facts and figures, and I don't want to misquote, so please be patient if I kind of stammer some of the things, but I wanted to make sure that I have the correct statistics when I'm talking. Um, so research has shown that ninety percent of smokers start before the age of eighteen, and the average age in the new smoker is thirteen, so if you kind of think about that, there's an age much younger than that that's starting, that's pulling that average down, as long as, as well as people starting closer to the age of eighteen, and only ten percent start over the age of eighteen. Uh, seventy-five percent of teens are known to shop at convenience stores at least once a week, and kids who shop at convenience stores more than twice a week are sixty-four percent more likely to start smoking than their peers who do not. Every year in New York State, two, uh, twenty-two thousand five hundred kids become new daily smokers. Currently, uh, the population of the city of Plattsburgh is nineteen thousand eight hundred citizens, according to the most recent census statistics, and thirteen point nine percent of Plattsburgh's population is under the age of eighteen. That means that we currently have two thousand five hundred and seventy-four children living in our city approximately. Um, we currently have roughly thirty-three licensed tobacco retailers, Live Spring's working, uh, and four shops, uh, that specialize in e-cigarettes within the city. So those are vape shops, um, places that may not sell traditional tobacco, but do sell e-cigarettes and nicotine, uh, delivery devices, also known as ENs, so Electronic Nicotine Delivery Systems. Uh, for every seventy, uh, children in the city of Plattsburgh, there's one tobacco or nicotine retailer. Uh, New York City average is one, uh, for every one child, or, uh, no, sorry, for every one tobacco retailer, there's a hundred and ninety-four children, so we are double the statewide average, um, for retailers to children. Um, so here I had made a visual of where our retailers are within the city of Plattsburgh. Um, you can see up here, I'll try to use this mouse, um, this is, you know, like our, uh, commercial areas, uh, up near all the gas stations, we have, uh, Big Lots and all that stuff up here, in this area, we have a few vape shops. And then, but if you look in the more residential communities, you'll see a higher density of tobacco retailers through this kind of vein of Plattsburgh. And then over here, I juxtapose that with the, um, poverty status for people in Plattsburgh.
Wow.
So, you can see within the communities that are residential neighborhoods, that there's a higher density of tobacco retailers, um, for those, uh, citizens. So if we're looking, I'm trying to orient ourselves on the map, so here's this part of the river, and you can kind of see it over here. So this is that area that going down South Catherine, um, hitting North Catherine, then Margaret Street, and then shooting out near Georgia Pacific. And then, uh, around these areas, you also see, like, I find that this shop here, and then this shop at this end are two of the most heavily marketed areas of tobacco, where they have, um, multiple kinds of tobacco products, usually like three-for-one cigarellos, a whole bunch of different flavors, a blueberry, peach, and all these different other kinds of products.
Their own by the same people.
Yeah, that makes sense. Um, and, that's good to know. Um, and so, the hard thing is also that with this map, I tried to also place, I wanted to do this a little bit later, the schools, parks, and playgrounds. Um, I will note that I did put all the Poki stops in Plattsburgh, if anybody's looking for that. Um, with mapping that, if you want to put that up on the city website. So I did note that, I wanted to note that, um, I did put Ted K on here as a school, because they do offer a lot of services for youth. But you'll also notice that in the areas of, you know, we have our higher-income areas of Plattsburgh, or more median income of Plattsburgh, that you do not see tobacco retailers near their parks and playgrounds. Whereas, in the lower-income parts of Plattsburgh, you do. Um, so here's your MoMott School, there's tobacco retailers in this distance. Um, this is Richards, and Dana and I were playing around with this map when we were learning how to do it, about what the distance between a school and a retailer is. Um, we'll get into this later, because I was asked to bring some policies from across New York State that have been passed. Um, this is about eight hundred and fifty feet, to kind of give a measurement, um, and we were kind of playing around with that, and that's the one that sticks in my head as a measurement. So you can also see downtown Plattsburgh, we also have a lot of retailers around our downtown areas, and we have vape shops. Currently, within New York State, you do not need a special license to sell vape products. Um, I was talking to Carrie Schneider from the Policy Center, and if you ever want to contact her, she's an amazing resource to talk about what, what if anything you can do to, like, to address tobacco in our community, and she's very, um, easy to speak with, you can ask her all sorts of questions. But she's saying that the policies have changed, and they will be looking at, um, making some sort of license, but the only area within New York State that requires a license, and it's a local license, is New York City. So the same for tobacco retailers, they have to have a local license, so does a vape shop, so they can keep track of where they're getting set up, because we have places, this is under one roof, and they no longer, like, they, you know, they've never sold cigarettes, yet they now have an e-cigarette display, which is very prominently placed within their shop, so, and then it's right next to Oak Street School. So we're finding that these places can pop up wherever they want, because they don't really have to disclose a whole lot to be in an area. So, um, so I find that there's this very strong correlation between the communities, you know, with, regarding, you know, up here we do have the commercial zoning areas, but in our, uh, residential areas, we see a lot more tobacco retailers in our low-income areas. So if you're thinking about a student who goes to Stafford Middle School, when they go home and they live in this part of town, they're going to pass several retailers on their way home. Their likelihood of shopping at a retailer on their way home, like grabbing chips, drinking something after school, is much higher than that of a student who is going and living in this area, or going from Plattsburgh High School and just going into this area, where it's a, just a higher-income area of Plattsburgh. Um, so, and it's also the same thing with our parks, you know, if a kid's going to park here, they're more likely to run into a retailer on their way home than if they live in another part of, uh, the community. So usually when we get into these kind of discussions about tobacco, people really like to talk about their freedom, their freedom of choice to buy or sell these products, and that really applies to adults, but I'd really like us to think about the freedom from, the child, like, a child's freedom from being advertised and marketed these products in the way that's really aggressively marketed towards youth, um, considering that the average age of the new smoker is thirteen, I think it's something that we really have to consider, um, taking action on, because if we know that if a child who shops at a convenience store twice a week is sixty-four percent more likely to use tobacco, then that's a huge statistic that we need to pay attention to. Um, and RJ Reynolds' executive was once asked about, uh, whether or not he smoked, and he said, "No, I don't smoke, I reserve that for the young, the poor, and the black, and the stupid." And you can really see this marketing played out in our own community, this isn't something that you see in big cities, this isn't something that you'll see, um, in some foreign, like, far-off places, this happens in Plattsburgh. If you, like, I like this, um, city data, um, website, because you can look at anything from, I don't have the actual keyboard, so I can't do it right now, but you can look at the race breakdown of these neighborhoods, you can look at all these things, and then if you juxtapose it with this map, which I will send you the link to, if you want to just play around with it and see who's who and what's going on. And then there's other areas that I didn't put on the map, like the YMCA, the, the library and all that stuff. Hmm, everything's wireless. Living on the edge. Okay. Um, so we can look at, I wonder which would be easiest to pay attention to.
As she's looking, as she's looking at that, you know, just so you know, you know, when she mentioned that New York City is the only municipality, that's because you can do it as a municipality. The, the two thousand nine, um, President Obama put into act of regulations, opens it up that we know more federal exemption, that local municipalities can create their own ordinances. So, and that's what you're seeing happen all across New York State.
Can you describe in more detail what this ordinance in New York City does?
Um, I can get it to, I have that in the, in the following part, and then, that's the only policy I couldn't get my hands on to, because it's very extensive, and I was trying to work with Carrie to get a hold of it, but I do have other policies from across the state that you can check out. So you can kind of see, like, uh, if you were to break down the black community, or the areas that have higher density of black citizens, or that area, it's similar, kind of like that they're within this kind of frame of Plattsburgh. I can't find the one that was the specific one I was looking at earlier to break this down, but you can, I can send a, a link to this website, if you just want to kind of see what Plattsburgh looks like under a few different circumstances, because you can, there's a lot of different ways that you can break down what Plattsburgh looks like, as you can see from this, oop, area. Okay, so moving on, I wanted to just kind of present some information there. Um, so, let's look at the next step. So I have produced, or put together a packet of different kinds of policies going on across New York State. Um, there are policies such as Tobacco Twenty-One, which is a policy to raise the age of purchase to twenty-one, with the main goal of removing the purchaser from the schools. It's easier for a freshman in high school to know a junior or senior, or someone who could purchase cigarettes for them, and by removing the purchaser, greatly reduces the availability of cigarettes to underage, uh, youth. However, um, we were talking about this a lot, and how this really isn't a great policy for a city, because, especially with the city of Plattsburgh and town of Plattsburgh being so close, if some, if we raise the age to twenty-one, someone's gonna walk two blocks and go by them for, as an age of eighteen, down the street. So, you know, like, this is something that can be looked at at the county level, a lot of counties across New York State are looking at this, uh, Connecticut County just passed Tobacco Twenty-One, um, New York City has Tobacco Twenty-One, uh, Kenne, what is that one?
Chittapla.
Chittapla.
In Daguere now, doing a topic.
And, yeah, so there's a lot of counties that are looking at that level, but that's not something so much on the city level. Um, and the Public Health and Tobacco Center measures their success of a policy by trying to limit the number of outlets, so you can see the density, that we have a higher density of retailers per use, um, than the state average. Um, you can limit where those places can be located, so it's, um, how close they can be to a school, park, or playground. Um, you can also look at that also as a way of, a certain retailer can't be within so many feet of another retailer, so they can't just be located next door, across the street, um, that they have to be a certain amount of distance from each other. Um, it can be limiting what kind of products are sold in stores, so that could be saying that, um, New York City says you can't sell, like, a lower than twenty cigarettes in a package. So that has to be the main quantity in every package, you're not able to discount and really make cheap cigarettes available, because they used to sell Lucy's, where you could go in and just buy a single cigarette at a time. And then also, um, you can restrict couponing and, uh, discounting of cigarettes, so that's another way of trying to do that, because we know in these low-income communities, they want to flood the market with the products, they'll try to get as many out there as they can, so buy one, get one free, um, dollar off, two dollars off for every two purchased, uh, two packets purchased, is a common thing in low-income areas. So, in your packet, I put the Ways and Means Packet, which is a really great breakdown of all the current policies across New York State they make. Um, I also have them. Nope, I don't have them, excuse me. It's on page eight, it starts. So I'll just kind of briefly go through each of the policies across New York State. Um, when I was talking to Carrie, she said there are a lot, a lot of other communities that are currently considering passing policies, they just don't, they haven't been passed, so she can't disclose who they are, and what the process is, and what they're looking at, but these are all policies that have been passed across New York State. So, looking at the first one, we have Binghamton, um, and Binghamton has decided that their major thing is they are not gonna allow any new retailers exist within five hundred feet of a school, so, kind of considering as your measurement, eight hundred and fifty feet is the area between Richards and MoMott, um, so it's somewhere that it can be, still be closer than that area to the school. So, um, they don't have any licensing, they don't require anything like that, uh, to be a part of their policy, they just don't want new retailers very close to the schools.
Excuse me, did you say that was the closest?
What?
Is that the closest one?
What do you mean?
Good trips to MoMott.
Um, no, I'd probably say Express Lane to Stafford, would be the closest.
I was just wondering how you, I was just wondering how you measured it.
Um, I wonder if I can...
That's okay.
No, there's a...
There's a tool with the map...
Here it is.
That you can take, and go a thousand feet, and you kind of look around, and, because both of us were trying, trying to figure, what is it? I keep thinking if I walk a thousand feet, that's just like across the street, it's not. So if you're at Stafford Middle School, it goes a little bit beyond the city police department, and then comes around, you know?
So, yeah, this is, so you can draw...
Oh, it includes, um, Latin bills, and under one roof, you know?
So, this, uh, so it's actually seven hundred and seventy feet from the Stafford School, or from MoMott. And then, so we can try to find, what, five hundred feet, if you're curious about that.
Oh, no, no, I was just, because I, I knew that Express Lane was awful close, I didn't know if they meant the actual building or the property.
Yeah, so, I think if, like, it's interesting to actually look at what these measurements actually mean, because if you think about five hundred feet from the school, that's actually not that far from the school, um, that's pretty much...
And there was big discussion with the Binghamton policy about that they wanted a thousand feet, they cut it back to five hundred, and I guess in Binghamton, where you're more condensed, that might solve some of their problems, but really, the national leaders in this really suggest nothing less than a thousand feet.
So, yeah, if you want to think about a different measurement, so five hundred feet would be pretty much Stafford to Express Lane, would be closest.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, moving on to the next policy, there is Kewga. Um, Kewga County has limited the sale of tobacco one hundred feet from schools. Um, it doesn't, um, add a local license, which can be revoked based on violations, um, or the desire for a new license to exist within a hundred feet of the, those, the school area. Um, it, their policy does include a very clear description of e-cigarettes and things that cannot be sold within that location. Um, I think I have Kewga's policy, because I really like the way that they discussed all the things that can't be sold, because there's, when you talk about restricting tobacco or other products, it's really broad now. Um, Kewga County's definition of tobacco, any means manufactured products containing tobacco or nicotine, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, snuff, chewing, uh, chewing tobacco, dipping tobacco, biddies, snooze, shisha, powdered and/or dissolvable tobacco, electronic cigarette cartridges, whether packaged or not, or any packaging that indicates it might contain any substance containing tobacco or nicotine. Very broad definition, um, and I think other, I noticed in other policies, it was very limited, cigar cigarettes, some of them talk about e-cigarette cartridges, but I think it's really important to be broad, and to really also frame it as nicotine, especially as, uh, e-cigarettes are becoming a thing, as dissolvable, um, because the Camel made a product that looked like those Listerine little tabs that actually contained nicotine, which wouldn't be a tobacco product, it'd actually be a nicotine product. So, um, but this, all these policies are actually in there, if you want to read them in full. So, um, so those two are, that's what's going on with Kewga County. Move to the next page. So the next one we have is Duchess County. Um, Duchess County requires, uh, all new retail, or all retailers to have a local license. Um, I was talking to Carrie, she said the one issue with this is that it's more through the health, um, code, it's not actually through legislature, so it doesn't have a lot of, like, it can't do a whole lot, but it really keeps a good eye on what is happening with the retail community within Duchess County, because they want to make sure that if it's increasing, are they seeing more tobacco retailers, are they seeing, um, retailers that are violating the Etuba License and things of that nature, so it really gives them a really good grip on what's going on. Next we have New York City, and New York City has one of the most comprehensive tobacco control policies, um, just kind of like a lot of different things going on there. Um, they require, once again, um, e-cigarette retailers and tobacco retailers to have a local license. It restricts the amount of retailers that can be located within the city. It also enforces its own excise tax, which raises revenue for the city, and it's the only one that exclusively raises money for itself. Um, currently, New York City is the only municipality within New York that does not allow retailers to take coupons or tobacco products. Um, this initiative really focuses on the industry trying to lower the prices, especially in low-income communities. Um, it is worth noting that both New York City and Providence, Rhode Island, two of the, um, cities that do have this kind of policy, were challenged by the tobacco industry, yet they, they were both upheld. These are both, uh, legal policies that are making a difference. Um, and, yeah, okay. So, that's New York City's policy, and once again, I'm gonna continue to work to get that in full, um, but just kind of tracks on a few different parts at a time. Newburgh, the next one, is also, is a very comprehensive policy. They, their aim was not so specifically to hit tobacco one hundred percent, that they had a drug problem, they had other kinds of issues going on with the city, so their policy is actually very interesting, because it, it touches on a lot of different things. Where the city of Newburgh, um, has a local policy, or a local, uh, licensing, and that licensing, in order to get that, you must meet city building codes, because they were finding a lot of their buildings were in disrepair, so they required anyone who wanted to have a tobacco license, that they physically, their building physically had to be in good condition, um, they had to have a common, like, uh, no, wait, sorry, I'm wrong. New retailers cannot be located within one thousand feet of the school, of a school, and their goal is to reduce the amount of retailers through rendering licenses near schools to become ineligible, so anybody who is already within that thousand feet, over time, they're, they will no longer be offered a license. Um, and then also, they are trying to reduce the amount of retailers for every new license they give out to have to go down. So, um, they say, like, if one is not renewed, or another one is revoked, whether or not it's, they sold to a minor, or something happened where they violated their license, one, only one retailer can come back. Um, so Newburgh's is a very comprehensive policy, they worked very hard on that one. And it also, like I said, like, touches on a lot of different issues going on in the city of Newburgh. Ulster County, um, has, uh, requires a local license, new retailers cannot be located within a thousand feet of the school. However, unlike Newburgh, existing retailers may continue to operate and transfer their license to a new owner who stays within the same scope of the business that was previously there. So say this is something, like, where Express Lane, they could sell their products the same way they always have, but say they wanted to expand and go into buying a bunch of different things, they couldn't do it. They can only stay where they are right now, um, in the amount that they sell and what's going on. Um, and those are currently the kind of, like, ways that they, different communities around New York State are addressing, the things that we're seeing in Plattsburgh, which I feel are the amount of targeting of low-income communities to become areas where cigarettes are sold, we're seeing that these kids are, you know, it's a cycle of poverty, you have, um, peer pressure, you have all these things that are part of it, and then on your way home, they know that the advertising in stores causes kids, like, it's an influence on kids smoking. Um, they know that shopping in the store multiple times a week is another influence for kids smoking, upon the other pressures going on in those communities. I've included on the other side of your packet, um, research, and it's kind of just bulleted point, I know you don't have, like, a whole lot of time, but it's just a basic overview of how the tobacco industry has specifically marketed to these communities, and how that has had an effect on the communities, because if you think about, um, how getting sick, you can no longer go to work for an eight, family that's living paycheck to paycheck, that just continues to dive that family down, um, these areas have kids that are within the poverty level, um, and it's just that cycle of poverty. So I think, uh, these were the policies that really struck me as a way, that looking at Plattsburgh, looking at our, the marketing of the tobacco industry, and where our retailers are, and how they're marketing, um, that this, these were policies that are happening across New York State that would be of interest. But like I said, Carrie is always available, if you want to see about, like, e-cigarettes on the Clean and Door Air policy, uh, if you want to look at any of those other things, it's all available to you. So, that is my spiel.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Yes. Back when, the last time I really seriously looked at smoking was two thousand fourteen, um, and at the time, uh, e-cigarettes and all those other things, some of which I don't even recognize, weren't, weren't really specifically covered by state law. Are they now?
Um, when I was talking to Carrie earlier, so, she said there's some new legislation coming down, which is like, would affect places like this guy, um, Vape Street, or Vape Cities, um, because apparently, one of the new policies they're creating is that you can no longer, um, mix your own e-cigarette liquids, and so they have to get a manufacturer's license. Um, beyond that, there is not, they're looking, like, I think it's, it's moving towards creating, like, the, the licensing the same way that, uh, tobacco retailers would have to go and apply for their license, um, that they'd be, uh, listed with Etuba to make sure that they're not selling, uh, products to underage individuals, but currently, there isn't a whole lot of, like, regulation with e-cigarettes, but that's one of the things New York City did, was make that local licensing for everybody, so if you wanted to sell any kind of nicotine product, that you had to register, and you had to make yourself known.
Yeah, I was thinking more along the usage end, um, you know, uh, we can't have any tobacco smoke, any secondhand smoke, basically, in any workplace, any workplace.
Right.
And at the time, uh, e-cigarettes weren't covered by that, do you know if that's changed?
Uh, I think... No, you know, you can change that, that's one of the things.
That, that, that was the point I was trying to make.
And that was one of the things I talked to Rochelle about, you know, like, for instance, the town of Plattsburgh amended their policy last fall to include all electronic nicotine delivery devices into their, both employee policies, and to their parks, playgrounds, beaches, and their municipal property, so you...
Yeah, that was, that was the basic reason for drafting that in fourteen, was to add that, so I, I just wanted to check to make sure it stayed alive and preempted.
I can give you the language that Bernie worked on, um, you, they really did a nice job of amending their policy to include electronic nicotine devices.
The other, the other, one of my other big concerns, and I don't know if you have any information about this, is when you take a place like a vape shop, or someplace up there, people are actually using some of these products, um, I'm getting some complaints that the products are leaching their way through the rest of the building. Are there any regulations on that that you're aware of at this point?
Um, I think that would probably fall under Clean and Door, like, if you amended the Clean and Door Air Act to include e-cigarettes, I think, I think we've talked about it before about Plattsburgh having to...
Yeah, that, but you're talking about a private residence, like, for instance, a building, a business, um, so that goes really to the landlord, and we are, the landowners create the policy themselves.
Yeah, but, but in some places they haven't, and that's my point. If you have a, a ground, a ground-floor business that's creating an unlivable condition in, in an apartment, I think the city has a responsibility.
I've been in that, know that apartment, and, you know, I think you're talking about it, it's a problem. And I think, unfortunately, I mean, I think there might be a municipal way to deal with that, but really, I think that goes to, um, the person who owns the building needs to create a policy that says, you know, you, you know, there's a no-smoking, no-vaping policy within the building, and that their tenants have to follow that, including the store.
We may be able to actually address it through code enforcement, and that, then, then the apartment is not habitable, therefore, they would lose revenue unless they fix it, so there may be another way to get it.
And that's kind of what, when Newburgh did their policy, and Kim talked about the whole coding part, I, I went to a presentation, a workshop with their, um, team, Newburgh, and they did a beautiful job. That policy was created because they had a drug paraphernalia problem, and people buying tobacco products, which I didn't even know, I had to learn, the tobacco products and using them as drug paraphernalia. So they addressed, uh, that, and there's no way that they could do that, just pinpointing, but they could do it through tobacco. So that's when they created, you can create a local, um, licensing, and their licensing is seventy-five for a hundred dollars a year, or every two years, but in the license, it says if you're going to sell tobacco within the city of Newburgh, you have to follow this, this, and this, and that could include, if the city chose to do that, electronic nicotine, you know, any, you could include it as nicotine delivery devices.
Can you be a little more specific about the this, this, and this, and what, what does that, that law say? What, what does that license require?
Like, Kim, uh, you have, I think, a copy of it in your packet, but like, Kim actually said, if you looked at it very broadly, they really wanted to limit, start limiting the number of licenses, and so some people just didn't apply for a license, because they didn't want to deal with it, they didn't want to have to get their building to be up to code, so they didn't apply. So there's one tobacco license that went out the door. Um, they then started, you know, within a thousand feet of schools, they also started by attrition, saying you couldn't have two tobacco retailers within a thousand feet of each other. That was another way to start working on limiting the number of tobacco retailers. So they took a licensing, a local-level licensing approach, um, and, and it's been implemented now for three, three or four years, and they're doing pretty well with it. It solved a lot of the problems, and the, the secondary, um, goal, which was reducing the number of tobacco retailers, has happened also. Um, in particular, in neighborhoods, you know, in low-income neighborhoods, and, um, in around schools, parks, and playgrounds. And I'm, I'm pretty particular to, you know, we always think about a thousand feet from we always think about a thousand feet from a school, but I think a thousand feet from our parks and playgrounds is equally important, you know, for tobacco sales. And this map shows that beautifully for me when I, when I saw it, you know, that we need to be looking at where our children are, how can we demoralize, de-glamorize, how can we, you know, reduce the influence of tobacco marketing on our young people.
It was just interesting when we were playing around with this tool. If you try to draw a circle around like a thousand feet or something, how many retailers are within like certain parts of the community?
That I had no idea. I couldn't picture a thousand feet. I was gonna go out and draw it somewhere.
Drive it.
That would be a good visual.
You know, maybe with chalk and get it.
And it's crazy, like once you get into this part of the community, you see very little retailers at all. And then like I think there's one that's coming up on Champlain that's gonna be, they've talked about applying for their license.
Well, I mean, it seems like it's just the older section, residential sections of town. Like I used to live on Ma Kam, there used to be a little corner store there.
There is one, there is one on Ma Kam.
Yeah, now there is.
Oh, oh, they're back in business. Okay. Anyway, and I lived around the corner from Muse Market, but you don't see that. I don't think it's zoned for that up in the, your ward right down.
Well, you know what's interesting? When I looked at the zoning, when I looked at the list of licenses across New York State, the, the little license that's for Oprah's Daily, I know the retailer that's at the corner of Celine's, is licensed as a, a bar. It's not even a retail. Was it, was it at one point, that's the most interesting thing to be-
Well, in the last sixty years or fifty-five.
Right.
I mean, I was over there, my friend, my best friend lived upstairs on the third floor. There was never a bar there. It was always-
Yeah. It was interesting to me.
Might've been cheaper to do there. Easier, I don't know. Maybe that's what was the requirement back when to have a liquor license too. So, I don't know.
You know, so for us, you know, I think, you know, really just kind of looking at the community that we live in and how can we make it a place that is healthy for our children to grow up in, live work, live work and play, you know? And this is one of the ways we address, because you know, as you look at statistics, oftentimes we hear New York State statistics, you know, our local statistics are always hot, way higher than the state statistics across the board. And, you know, we don't really think about this. And we still have a problem. And we still have a whole generation of kids that are being influenced and brought up, um, in a pro-tobacco section, area. So that's, that's kind of-
Kim has come here and spoken to us several times, and she's brought some of these young people in a reality check with her. And I'm convinced that we need to do something. Would you give us the luxury of telling us what to do? Would you?
I mean, in terms of what you know.
What, what could we do? I mean, what would you see as health experts? What would you see the best thing that this, that this city can do to address this issue?
I think she gave you some options in there to look at. I think you need to look at what you think within the city is something that works with the information you have. And I am not kidding, the resource of Alana at the, in Cary, at the resource, at the policy center, they are at your beck and call.
Okay, we need to have their contact information.
Yeah, I will send that off to you tomorrow, along with this map and-
You can call them, talk to them. They will help you. They can talk more with you directly about policy development. We can give you an overview of what the face looks like here in New York State of what's happened. But really, she can, and they can really help you a lot more. And if you need further conversation, or you just wanna bounce things around, you know, we're here to support you. That's, that's what we are. But really, the whole discussion about what policy option you might want, really falls upon you as the leaders in the community.
We, we have to make that decision.
And the policy center will help you right out. So.
Well, what, what do my fellow lawmakers think about this? What, what's, what's the important thing?
I think it's a worthy goal. I mean, I, and, and the fact that there are, you know, policies out there already crafted, and, and we can, you know, see what kind of effect they're trying to have, what kinds of goals they've tried to set. It's just a matter of weighing the extent of our, you know, the reach of whatever laws. Yeah.
Right. And I think we'd have to be conscious of that in certain areas.
Yes.
I would ask a question, or I have a couple of questions. It seems, and we heard through this, Kimberly, and reading, that a lot of this is in low-income areas.
Correct.
Why is the price of cigarettes not a deterrent in low-income areas?
A lot of it is through discounting. You'll find more discounting in low-income areas. Like, I know cigarettes are still at a very high price.
Right, yes.
Also, that in those areas, I think it's, a lot of it really comes down to the style of marketing, like the ages which kids get addicted to cigarettes. So it's not adults like going, oh, I have this amount of money. It's kids who have disposable incomes that start, that maybe get an allowance, maybe they, you know, have like a, a job, like a job or something that they're doing. So they don't really have all this money to be so considerate about their income. But you know, as a, then they get addicted, and then it's an addiction from that point forward that they're feeding. It's not a simple thing. So when you really look at these communities and think about the average age is thirteen, the thirteen-year-old isn't thinking about their finances and about all these things that are doing that. And then add on top of that, the fact that the tobacco industry really, they spend a million dollars every day within New York State, and seventy-five percent of that price goes to the discounting, marketing of cigarettes at the point of sale. So we know that they don't mind taking the hit at the point of sale because they have someone for life, they have someone for life. So I think, you know, as the prices increase, we have seen a great reduction of smokers. But I think a lot of it really comes down to, they get people when they're young and they have some expendable income.
So we can make it, we can make it illegal to do that kind of couponing in, in our city if we choose to?
Yep. Currently, New York City is the only municipality within New York State that has accomplished that. It's good because they are the biggest one, and since they've already been challenged, they've upheld it, and then the tobacco industry will take that down.
You mentioned another city, another-
Providence Road.
Providence Road.
Yeah, both of which, like it's nice when, especially when these big, these policies that do have these effects, like because they, they know that that has a big impact on who smokes. So they want to try to challenge that law and bring it down. The fact that a big city like Providence and New York City built that has really been a testament to the fact that, you know, this is a, a legal policy to enact in a community.
And reducing the number of retailers is really an ultimate goal. And, you know, that helps tremendously too.
Yeah.
So the licensing and then the restrictions on the licensing and how they can be slowly decreased.
I think it's like, you always wanna be sensitive to the current retail business owners within our community. But I feel there's ways to be both respectful to retailers and then also look toward future and how the, like what our community's gonna look like if it keeps them open.
The Health Department, when they establish a smoke-free zone, is that a policy?
Like a-
Is that a policy?
Tobacco-free grounds policy?
Like at the city beach.
Yeah.
That's-
That's a smoke-free zone, though you would never know it. I would say, you would never know it. Well, you know, it's, you'd never know it.
Yeah, right.
And I don't think there's any education, you know, maybe a leaflet at the gate, but it's just as an example. It doesn't seem to be a deterrent.
Um, I think it has to go with enforcement. I think there's greater teeth in enforcement with this kind of re, uh, marketing, or not marketing, but this kind of policy, because there's places like, there are already things in place like a TUPA and other programs that-
What's that, TUPA?
Uh-huh.
What, what was the one you used?
What is it? Adolescent Tobacco Use? It's when they have kids go in and see if they can buy cigarettes underage, making sure that they're following the correct policies to make sure that underage kids do not buy cigarettes in stores. So-
It is about enforcement. If you've noticed, like I think the county, you know, I watch consistently to see, you know, how is their policy being enforced and implemented. And it's amazing to me, the sign, I was just looking at it today, the signage that's all around the county property really has done a nice, a nice job of putting a perimeter up and saying, and those are nice, those green signs, that this is a tobacco-free property. And, you know, it started with really getting the employees on board with that. And then, you know, moving to making sure if the employees aren't standing right outside the door, then the public isn't going to. You know, and it's, it's education. And I think signage is very helpful in those kinds of policies.
The other thing to remember is there's less than fifty of those. There might be two thousand people at the beach. It's a lot easier to enforce something at fifty locations than it is over hundreds or thousands of people.
And it takes time for a culture change to happen. It really does. It takes time.
And we still see, I don't know, Dana, I remember one time I was talking about smoking in park kind of situation. And I feel like when I was in, like when elementary school playing, like in the youth softball league, that the parents would just be smoking in the stands. Now they kind of go away from the kids and they smoke off in the field somewhere. Like it's, it's changing. It's little by little. It's really hard to enforce those policies because, yeah, like you said, there's thousands of people smoking, there's all these beaches and, you know, there's, the culture's changing, but that one's gonna be a slow and steady.
Good signage and lots of education through web, social media, newsletters.
And we do some events and stuff.
Well, I mean, if, I think that a smart way to go forward would be if, if there's, you know, general consensus that this is something we're interested in, to create kind of like a plan of action. You know, have a couple of people who are interested in pursuing this to sit down and say, okay, brainstorm, what kind of steps do we need to take? And what kind of timeline can we come up with? And, cause these kinds of things, you know, unless you take that first step, they tend to kind of languish.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a good idea, but, and everybody's behind it, but where's the plan?
Yeah.
Right?
And if you wanted, we can also pull in some people that have, you know, for instance, from Newburg, I can contact team Newburg, just so we can get them to come up. I saw, I went and saw them present connectivity. You know, there's some other that might not necessarily, there's some other people who have developed municipalities, developed policies that might-
Why reinvent the wheel?
... give the resource for you. So, you know, I think you're right, Rochelle, that committee, that we, and we can help, help you with some of the resources that are out across New York State.
I mean, and, and this might even, you know, I always tend to go here. But it, it might even be the kind of thing that, you know, the general public might be interested in contributing to as well. So.
And I think the other thing to keep in mind is, many of these retailers should be involved as well.
Yeah.
To make them, you know, part of the solution to-
That's great. Yep.
And that's the other thing. You can come back to us with what do you need us to collect for you? You know, is there a support you need collected? Cause we can go out and figure out ways to do that. So, you know, we'll need to know from you what you need from the community and from us.
I have some thoughts.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm gonna be around to actually decide on what's going where and what people vote on, but if that, if this gets enacted, I think it's a good idea to do something. Signages, doesn't matter how many signs you have up. You're going to the mall, they're still smoking there. You go on the hospital grounds, they're still smoking by the pond. The key to education, to me, doesn't make a difference. The bottom line, and I think is enforcement. Just like we have in a lot of our codes, there's lack of enforcement with a lot of things. I think this is great. You need to establish who might do that and how. And if there are codes, who enforces them? I would be very concerned about our building inspector's office, our code enforcement officers, they've got enough work to do.
Well, yeah.
I mean, if I was to look, and I'm throwing this at you, if I was to look at it, I'd look at it as, it would be a police-type enforcement, just like it would be for, and then the Health Department would have to be the, the outlet, the, could be, whatever is decided, okay? But if that is the case, and we would try to do that, would the Health Department be required to do that? That's what I'm wondering. Do they have to?
Yeah.
You know, that's something that people need to look at.
Yeah, look at other enforcement models.
Cause I see county, yeah, Health Department, county designs, oh, here's who's enforcing it. And that's easy, cause they do a lot of enforcement.
Yeah.
But again, with everything else, it needs to be enforced. We've had a lot of laws reenacted since we've been in. A lot of resolutions.
Yeah.
And a lot of them still aren't enforced because of lack of people to do it. And I think it's fair to say that. There's a lot put on that building inspector's office. And I just, I think it should be looked at a little bit more.
Yeah.
We are coming into budget season. I know. I know. That's what I'm saying. So, but that's, that's my input to you guys. And I agree a hundred percent about enforcement. It's the bottom line. Cause nothing bothers me anymore than it to be enforced, but yet people are still gonna violate it because they need it. They got that addiction to it.
Yeah.
So, and don't get between me and my drug or me and my addiction. I'm gonna do anything I can. And if you walk into the mall where Target is, they smoke there all the time. And all the time. And I was told that it's Target's property, that's how they lease, they can have their employees smoke there. I, I have no idea if that's the case. If you said the town of Plattsburgh has enacted something, well, maybe who's enforcing that again? If I go up to somebody and say, you know, I can report it, but if you don't catch them, how do you do it?
Well, yeah, Joe, Joe brought up some really good questions concerning enforcement and, yeah.
Yeah, oh, no.
It's not gonna be easy.
No, it's not. But I, I'm all in favor of it.
Yeah.
You know, as, as I think everybody under this table.
And that times, that type of social norm changing takes time and persistence.
Right.
It's, it's, it's a long haul work to take the time to change the culture, to self-monitor themselves. And, you know, like for instance, the mall and the hospital are still, hospital's a little bit older in their policy than the mall is. But I'll even have to say though, I sat outside the mall doors by the theater recently, having a cup of soup, and there was nobody smoking. And at all. I mean, when I was there, you know, whereas it used to be. Now I do know there's a few other entrances that are more of a problem area.
Well, relating to the hospital, I was there today. I got in my wife's car and I go where this, they call it the butt, or whatever you wanna call it. And there were five employees, twenty feet inside the hospital grounds. And they don't wanna walk another twenty feet to go to where their bench is busy. So they're in violation, but every day, a walk, a lot of hours.
That's kind of ironic.
It is.
Hospital.
Yeah, no, but it's, but again, then you gotta look at the businesses, like the mayor says, they gotta be involved.
Sure.
You're gonna tell these people they can't do this, they're already doing it. I mean, how can you tell them that? You do your grandfather people in, you do this. It's hard to, it's hard to enforce that. But I'm just saying, that's something, as a thought. And then you've got a lot of smokers that are gonna be very irate. Okay? Depending. But like you said, it's a step and it's a process. This might take a while, but I think it's a good goal for this council. I really do.
And for a lot of these communities, it's a lot of the density is the issue. It's not that there are retailers that exist there, should, you know, like people are still gonna buy cigarettes or whatever they're, they need to buy. But it's more that, you know, why are these all so close to each other? Like, why do we have so many like within the same distance of each other? So it's like, you know, you can still purchase cigarettes within that community, it's not penalizing.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, I think you provide such a wonderful inspiration for setting the goal of health. You know, and I, who can argue with that? And if you go forward with the idea that this were a help to the city, you know, and this is one of the steps we're taking to be a healthy city, as we do in so many other areas, you, there may be business people who wanna buy into that because that's in their interest as well.
I will never forget the mayor of Havistra, when they were looking at a, they actually passed a policy, this is a number of years ago, to eliminate the display of tobacco in the Queen of Sale location. And they were sued by the tobacco industry. And they had to back off of it. But, you know, when he stood up for that policy, he said, this is just the right thing to do. And all there was to it, that's all he needed at the time was, this is just the right thing to do. And they've circled around and done some other work. You know, we usually use that as the poor little, you know, like the little engine that could kind of thing. as the poor little, you know, like, the little engine that could kind of thing, but they've circled around and do some other work. But, you know, that, I just, I will never forget that. This was just the right thing to do, yes.
And I want to give you some feedback. So you came and you presented us and you talked about how it's displayed.
Yes.
Every store I go in, I intentionally look to see.
Yeah.
I said Walmart, ironically, is doing one of the better things. They have one cash register you can go to, you can't buy it anywhere else, behind the counter. And I know a lot of people that don't want their kids to see it, may not go to that register.
Yeah.
So that's a good start and how you display it is a big deal too. When you walk in, there it is, right in the eye. So maybe that could be a regulation on where you can display it or if you can keep it under, you know, a counter or something. It's all something that can be done.
That is still something that can be done.
Exactly.
You know, and I look at that, you know, we're up here in upstate New York, we're right along in the border of Quebec, and this, that particular solution doesn't work south of us because they get into all kinds of other stuff. But you can't step over any border along the Canadian border in any province and ever see a tobacco display. You know, and it's worse in such close proximity to Canada, it almost seems like it's something, you know, that we could be doing to support our Canadian, um, friends who have created this kind of policy. That's, but that's one that we kind of have looked at secondarily because for a lot of the other areas in New York State, it doesn't work. But for here, it's, you're right. I mean, Hannaford has covered up their display. Interestingly enough, though, all of their other tobacco stuff, which is all flavored, is open, you know, to be seen. You're gonna see a shift in Price Chopper, I think is going to stop selling tobacco completely when they revamp their stores into they're doing a new branding. Um, if you, if you even notice, Kinnis has made a huge change in their tobacco displays recently. It no longer looks like a tobacco display. It's all below the counter and now it's all information above the, the medical, like, health information, you know? So those kinds of things, those are things that, oh my gosh, we've worked for years in educating individual businesses, but individual businesses unfortunately don't necessarily always change a whole culture.
Right. And I think it's, Kimberly said, these little convenience stores, both kids are in and out of them maybe four or five times a day where they're not in the bigger retail stores.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the smaller, I don't think cigarette sales are that big with Price Chopper, but they probably are with some of these.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
On the map, it's a big income, cause you go in for a...
Yeah, that makes it tricky.
Buy a lottery ticket, you know, it's kind of a package deal.
Yeah.
I would have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, use of tobacco products is prohibited in all of the following places in the city of Plattsburgh, city property. Does that include sidewalks? No? Okay. Cause that would be a whole...
An interesting...
And they tried to do that.
Sure. I mean, if I docked my boat, I wanted to walk uptown for lunch, not that I would, I couldn't have a smoke on the way up. Uh, you, you, it would have a lot of effect.
That'd be so difficult to enforce, just driving through every street.
Yes.
Cuffing the squirt gun, just like, ah.
All right. Sidewalks, okay. The sidewalks are an issue when it comes to stone, hedges, and now they become an issue with...
I know when the, the, so you, Plattsburgh was looking at a policy like the sidewalks, I think they're also an issue as they run through the campus, not really... So, but that's always a tricky...
Without, without putting words in anybody's mouth, I, I sense that we might be interested in looking at the licensing issue and also the, uh, the distance from, well, I guess that's part of the licensing issue.
But I can, I will send you Carrie's information in the Policy Center, so you can ask them any questions that you may have of, um, can we do this plus this, or can we maybe add this, or we have this problem, what have our communities done, or what can we do about it? And she's very, uh, well-informed and the Policy Center's a great asset and they've helped all of these communities develop what works for them. And that's what we're looking to do. We're not trying to make anything happen except what works for Plattsburgh and what, especially as we're going through all this growth right now, like, how can we set up our future that, you know, more retailers aren't coming in because we're seeing more places like Dollar General and these kind of like pseudo-general stores coming in that are, you know, they now sell cigarettes, so I think it's something to be very aware of.
There may not be anything we can do immediately about any of the existing retailers, but going forward, we certainly can.
Yeah.
And, and then over the long haul, we can even do something about the existing retailers.
Yeah, it could be like when it, looking at non-transferable licenses, like, as long as you are an operator that stays within that business, you may have your license, but if you look to sell a business, the new operator cannot renew that license. So it's not punishing someone who's currently in that area, they can continue business as usual, but, you know, the, the goal is to move them further away from the schools, parks and playgrounds.
Not that I'm advocating, but the argument could be if I was selling a business I could sell, if I'm trying to sell it or it could no longer be sold, it wouldn't have an effect on it. And it might be a tough sell.
Yeah. That's where, um, other communities have allowed...
It would diminish the value, what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So that, like, the whole thing is that it can be tailored around the needs of the community cause other places have allowed the, it to stay, as long as it's staying within the same scope, you're not trying to increase the amount of tobacco so that you can continue your license.
I also think that the, uh, the restriction on discounts is a good, a good idea. It's something that we could probably implement.
Yeah. They found that even with, uh, I think with a dollar increase in the price of cigarettes, that the youth rate drops by six percent. Even though they can't buy the cigarettes, they still find a way to get them, um, and we know that the, that even though they can't buy them, that they are a price-sensitive audience and that, that they're the ones starting to smoke. And if we can limit the ways that kids start, then we're gonna have less adult smokers to deal with in the future.
Excellent information presentation.
Thank you.
So lucky to have you guys.
Thank you guys for having us so much. It's been exciting.
Great. Did you have a chance to look at the, uh, the local law that was proposed a couple years ago?
I don't know if you, it was about, um, more of the grounds policies, probably?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was really at the time just not about sale, more about use.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not terribly familiar with grounds policies and all that. I did work with the, the county on those types of policies, so...
Yeah, and that came from the Health Department.
Oh, yeah. What, what prevented us from passing this?
It just never got, never got to the forefront as well.
You know, interestingly, now that the town of Plattsburgh found that they had never, even though they implemented it, they had never passed it, so they took what they had, like you had, amended it, included e-cigarettes and, uh...
We do have, we do have, um, some policy on this and this, that really, the e-cigarette piece was the reason for resurrecting it and...
Right, and that was like, uh, item number four since section two.
Yeah.
To talk about inhaling, exhaling, burning, carrying any lighter, heating cigars, et cetera.
I think in there, they mentioned all the, all the other ones that...
Right. So it was, we already have a law to address this, but this was just to modernize, I guess.
I'm not sure we have a law at this point. I think we, we do have a little bit of code on it, but I'll have to check and see what we do have. I, I think at the time, uh, my thought was that it was woefully out of date anyway and let's kind of really start from scratch and build what we wanna build.
Okay.
I can send you the town's...
Free visitors.
Yeah, be good, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot, Dana.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yes, it's wonderful. We'll be in touch, right?
So the other item that was on the agenda tonight was the massive update on what's going on with downtown revitalization, um, cause actually now there is something. As we mentioned before, um, the state has hired HR and A to be our urban planning consultants. Uh, that's H-R and A, um, and, um, they've got a good website, I recommend people go see it. They, uh, there will be our first meeting with them, which will be a telephone meeting next Tuesday, so we'll get a chance to meet with the Department of State people as well as HR and A, um, and that will, that will be kind of really setting the agenda for when they'll be here, what they'll be doing. Uh, at the same time, the appointment of the, um, I, I believe they call it the Steering Committee, uh, is in the hands of the Department of State. Um, I took everyone's recommendations, uh, took a lot of input from, from other places, looked at, uh, going after, listing names of people who also were involved in things. For example, you know, we had a number of people who were on the LWRP pack, put their names in the mix. Uh, we took, uh, you know, board of, uh, of the, number of the Vision to Action people, you know, people who've been involved in planning and stuff. And, and so we sent down a list of, uh, maybe forty-five or fifty names. Uh, they're looking at, uh, with comments on each of them, that, you know, uh, really saying if you're looking for political whack, you know, you want the chairman of the board. If you're looking for someone who knows what you're doing, you want the accountant. You know, I mean, uh, those are both examples that I didn't use, so I can't offend anybody by doing that. Um, and really, you know, gave a little bio on each and talked about the kinds of groups that they're involved in. I suspect that will come up on Tuesday as well, so I've been thinking that by next week, we should have a lot better idea of where we're going and how we're going. Based on, of course, the last planning cycle that we're still in with Saratoga Associates, uh, they're gonna be coming up tomorrow and will be soliciting comments on one of many options that's been floated. Um, it's not at all a plan, it is merely, uh, one of many concepts, really just trying to, I guess the, the, the real way to describe it is, a discussion starters. You know, there is not a plan to do anything at this point except to, uh, increase housing, retail, uh, uh, open space, uh, river access, you know, those, those kind of like four or five principles that were in the application. Uh, but in order to prompt conversations, uh, there'll be some materials available that will help prompt conversations. They'll be there, um, I know I'll be there, I recommend anybody who can come by to come by.
Where, when and where?
It's gonna be during Downtown Rising.
Oh, okay.
Uh, because there's so many people are gonna be in Trinity Park, so they'll be set up at the other end of Trinity Park and kind of soliciting input. And that's the first, uh, they'll be, that particular group will be back again, I forget when, right now I'd have to look. Oh, Battle of Plattsburgh, I can't remember. Duh. Uh, gee, that's coming up. But that's not, obviously not the only input session, it's just two that, that Saratoga Associates and, and, uh, and CHAZEN will be doing, but there'll be more. And we'll get a better sense of that after we have the conversation next week.
How do you spell CHAZEN?
C-H-A-Z-E-N.
Yeah, that's how you spell it.
If you trust me.
Very good.
That's the French way for CHAZEN.
I think we should livestream it.
So you, you said the, the HR and A group is, is appointed by the State Department?
The State, no, actually Empire State Development hired a, an urban planning, uh, group for each one of the ten, uh, award winners. And by the way, Glenn's Falls was awarded today.
Oh.
Uh, so now there's eight that have been named. Um, they, so, so each one has a, a consulting firm that's gonna work with them in developing the plan, uh, and, and arranging financing and, you know, the whole economic piece of it as well. Um, I like theirs a lot. Um, they're, uh, if you go to their website and, um, if it wasn't, if we weren't streaming and all these other complications, I might go look for it now, but, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with the Highline Railroad in New York, it's a one-point-eight mile abandoned elevated rail. And they were about to tear it down and they turned it into a garden.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One-point-eight mile garden. Well, that, we don't have that, but it's, it gives you an idea of the, the, uh, kind of work that they've done. Um, they've done, they, they helped design Griffiths Air Force Base Business Park when they pulled out of, uh, when Air Force pulled out of there. Um, they've done a number of other things, did some Toronto waterfront. Uh, there's a, a picture on their, on their site for what they did in, in downtown Cincinnati that is kind of close to what is in my head, you know? They do have a big ice rink in the middle of it. I, if it's not permanent, then it's really close to what I think. If it's permanent, then I'm a little less enthused about it. But, uh, you know, gathering space with, uh, just lots of stuff. And I, I, I think, I think they'll be a good group for us. Uh, we've also got some, made some suggestions, uh, about some local people with, with real expertise in, in, in that.